So, we are going to call this meeting to order.
Can we say with the pledge?
Sure.
Okay.
Do we have a flag?
We have a flag.
Please say your pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, the purpose of this meeting tonight was to go into an executive session to discuss the history of a particular person. With that being said, I realize we have a full house here, and we're happy that you're here. So, we can continue the regular session if anyone would like to speak, but we're not taking any action tonight on anything. The purpose of this meeting was just to hold executive session. We have to go into regular session first and then move into executive session. So, if anyone wants to take some time, it would still be the same rules that apply when we have a regular board meeting, which is a two-minute speaking time limit. But you are more than welcome. We're happy to hear you, or you just can't take any action.
And do you need them to use this?
The podium?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I'll kick things off. Use the podium?
Yes, please.
Alright, so I'm not sure how many of you got a chance to read my email. It echoed a lot of the segments. People are gonna have their own things to say, for sure. I'm a direct guy, as you probably gauge from my email that I sent.
I give Mr. Jerome.
Mr. Jerome.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Please state your name.
Yes. So, my name is Ryan Jerome. I have a brief statement and then a couple of questions, and hopefully you can answer. You can tell me if you can. So, again, my name is Ryan Jerome. My wife and I moved to Eden just over five years ago. We run a small farm, two national companies right here out of Eden. We're active and sponsor the community in general wherever we can, the Boys and Girls Club fundraisers. We support and sponsor local sporting events and teams, softball, so on and so forth. We've put four daughters through school. We're in school now. We made the decision to come to Eden just over five years ago, largely based on their education. Thankfully, the apple fell very far from the tree, as far as that goes, because I certainly was not the one that cared about my education nearly as much as our girls do. But they do, and we want to support that every corner. Our first that we graduated through Eden is now a senior at Pitt. She's studying ecology, graduated top 10% of our class. Our second graduated sort of Torian just three years ago from Eden. She's studying statistics and actuarial sciences, which I can barely say. Our third is currently a senior, and she's either number one or two of her class, captain of the tennis team, band officer. And our fourth, right behind her, is a freshman this year on a very similar path, similar grades. As I sent in the email earlier, I will reiterate now as well. I'm not saying this to brag. I'm saying this because many other students have the same drive. A lot of parents are here tonight. And these are exactly the type of students, I think, that you all should be ensuring have the resources, the programs, the curriculum to challenge and cultivate here at Eden. These are children who came to us largely with these concerns. We found out about many of the things that have happened through our kids somehow. They got their schedules, and we had no idea about it, not the other way around. These are kids who actually care about their education. In many cases, have lofty career ambitions, and I think bluntly, somebody, you all, whoever, have let them down pretty significantly. These are kids who literally voluntarily give up lunch, which is like my favorite subject in school, to do an independent study or take a class because of the ongoing scheduling debacles that are in here. As has been echoed by other parents and growing list of parents, we are actually sincerely contemplating pulling our kids out of the school district, even if that means moving altogether. So, we have to do what's best for our kids, their being in a school that limits recycles of willingness and drive to learn, that puts them at an actual and measurable disadvantage compared to other college-bound and career-respiring students. It's not something we're gonna talk about anymore. How you all didn't see or don't see the ramifications of something seemingly as small as removing a few honors classes, in air quotes, I don't understand. College acceptance, scholarships, and what other things. The affected students, these are the affected students. I think that the entire town and school system should be encouraging not to deter. These are kids who bring the average test scores up, who school rankings. These are the classes and curriculums that attract new families and the brightest and best to the town. And I think this should be encouraged and not the other way around, for sure. I fully understand. I can empathize and sympathize with you all, budgetary challenges, so on and so forth. And the justice in my business is anywhere else. I totally get that you can't make everybody happy 100% of the time. But the current issues appear to have nothing to do with budgetary and just simply poor decision-making. So, my couple of quick questions that I know you all have a discovery session or whatever after, as it's been made clear in the emails, or as I understand, that I think we could at least get answers to now before any action is taken. What changes are going to be made to students' transcripts who have already completed these honors classes?
Answer's none. I can answer that. There is no change.
There's no change.
No change.
So, the rumors or the email about these will be removed?
There's rumors that we've dropped all APs, too. So, there's no change to current transcripts.
Okay. So, the new principal's email then was just not accurate?
Yeah, I didn't see his email stating that.
So, 100% clear, if a student in recent two years has already taken an honors class, it's gonna remain an honors designation?
Yes.
Okay. So, that answers the second one, then. What impact will that have to any GPAs? Can we get an answer as to what the ethical reasons were that were mentioned as the honors designation is removed?
The only thing that I have been able to find out, and I have meetings set up for tomorrow, is that those courses were taught exactly the same as the standard course. And so, to have the honors designation was a conversation that they had in the springtime, that it wasn't right to call them honors when they were actually accelerated and not honors. They were not enriched.
Okay. And when was this known and by whom?
I learned about it from Alan Silver, first week in August, because his granddaughter opened up her schedule.
And do we know who made this decision?
The former principal.
Is there a timeline for reinstating honors? Like, seemingly to...
That I can't answer for you right now. That's what all my meetings are about.
So, as I understand it, limited time, I tried to do a little bit of research. Honors, is it building-level designation? Which means that it's not something that's governed or sanctioned by the state?
This is true.
Is it a decision you own? So, just bluntly, the former principal, whoever, just decided no more honors with no action plan to replace honors programs?
I'm still researching that.
And then I think there's a number of questions, to whatever extent you can answer, for the circumstances and reasons surrounding the termination of Mr. Privich. Is that how you pronounce it? That can't be spoken to. There's rumors of inappropriate contact and so on and so forth. And there's things that I would think a lot of parents and students should answer.
Any personnel issues or reasons for resigning from any position in the district aren't publicly discussed?
Yeah. As an attorney, I can tell you we can't legally make any statements regarding that. That's honest.
But, whatever time, so a lot of the parents talk to. I mean, just my final wrap-up. I think everybody's gonna echo the same thing, just in general, putting younger students in older students' classes. Just ask them for a number of reasons. Bullying, nervous, and timid students not wanting to speak up, older students not wanting to be shown up, or younger students. There's a whole host of reasons. Everybody else will share their thoughts on as well. So, I'll leave that one aside. I think everything else is not necessarily relative to tonight. So, thank you for the few minutes that are going to be heard.
Thank you.
And I'm looking for hearing more. Hopefully, an action plan to fix it this year. Thank you.
Good evening. Missy Hartman. I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a parent, as supervisor of the town, and also as a former, I'm sorry, a former assistant director of admissions at the University of Buffalo. I would like more clarification, and that can be later, it doesn't need to be tonight, on the fact that the transcripts do not need to be changed because if you've already identified that they weren't actually in the honors classes. I'm not understanding correctly how it can be left in the transcript. That's just a question that does need to be answered right now. But I'm not sure that that answer is correct, especially ways off my conversation with the new interim principal and my knowledge as an admissions director, assistant director. So, a couple of things. A lot of you in this room, a lot of you on the board, have worked very hard, including our superintendent, on putting together a new master plan. A big piece of our implementation of that master plan is to increase our population solely to support our school system. One of the things that is very discouraging to me as a parent of an honors student, an incoming honors student, is that the lack of communication that's taken place around this issue and how embarrassing it's gonna be if this is presented as how our school system, A, handles these types of situations, doesn't understand or know that these situations are happening, and the fact that we don't have a solid honors program and a STEM-related educational piece. When our New York State education makes it very clear right now that STEM is a focus. And so, I have, you know, many questions surrounding the math-science piece, and I don't quite understand how some are honors and some are not, and there's only four classes affected. In reality, I have always questioned how our honors program works, building into our AP. Honors is a building program to help students that are interested in taking accelerated classes to be able to take those and be successful in them. And so, if they're taking an honors class that's not truly an honors class, then we're not giving them those keys to help them in the advanced placement class, which I guess kinda correlates to some of the recent scores that I've noticed and some of the SAT, ACT scores that I've seen through my position at UB come out of this school district, specifically the math. And so, I question now, are those scores maybe a little bit lower than some of our other districts? Because we're not properly giving them the tools in actual honors class to be taking these advanced placement classes and being successful there, and then, of course, being successful in their college years. So, those are things I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Missy.
Hello. My name is Karen Hall. I have two children in the district, ninth and 12th grade. And I have been speaking in support of programming to meet the needs of students at higher academic levels since 2012. I think that was a long time ago. And I have to say sadly that I have been disappointed since that time in this district's effort to address the needs of the student population. REACH, which was a program, I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with REACH, but that was a program that was here at the elementary school. And it gradually was cut, 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 till there was nothing left of that program. So, I know that once they get to the high school, they're put into these honors programs, assuming they still exist. And I'm not really familiar with what is happening at the elementary school at this point with programming and advanced academic levels. But at the high school, and we've already talked a little bit about it, it's accelerated, not necessarily advanced. And while there are a lot of benefits to accelerated, this allows them to take a lot of college courses in junior and senior year. But it doesn't give them advanced materials at that younger, in the honors programs. But what it does give them is it gives them the opportunity to be with students that feel the same way about their schoolwork. They're like-minded students that care. They really just care about how their work and what they do in the classroom. And they work hard. They're motivated, and it's good for them to be with students that feel the same way. So, they're not just in the honors classes. They're motivated, they're competitive, they want to be engaged with teachers and the students. So, please, if we can change this and make it so that these students are continuing on with a group of students that they're comfortable with, would be greatly appreciated. So, and I think Bryn, can I push on the spot? You can hear from my daughter.
Hi. My name is Bryn Hall. I'm going into my freshman year of high school, and I've been a student in the honors classes since fifth grade. I'm here tonight in hopes of getting our honors classes reinstated. And I would like to speak more on, like, a student perspective of this, not like as a parent, like, how this is going to affect me. So, I'd like to share some reasons why honors classes are so important to me. Even as an honors student, I think it is very important to ask questions. It's critical, and we must feel comfortable with our peers. If we're surrounded by kids we don't know, who are older than us and non-honors, we'll never, we're, sorry. We're never gonna feel comfortable asking questions in class or engaging. There's also many expectations that have been set for us. We're honors students because we work hard and are motivated. We compete with others and always try to do our very best. So, to expect us to never have questions is just not right. And I also am concerned for shy students. In the classroom, I'm not afraid to seek help from a teacher. However, I know not all students are the same way. My older sister, who is now a senior in high school, is also very shy in nature. And in her freshman year, she had to be in a science lab class surrounded by only sophomores. She never engaged in class, never felt comfortable to ask questions, and even received not bullying, but like jokes from older students that, "Oh, you're an honors student, you can never be wrong," which is not true. And I think the same thing will happen if you try to incorporate ninth-grade honors students with 10th-grade non-honors students. The final point I'd like to make is that honors students get bored in class, especially when the class is maybe at a slower pace or they're not surrounded by students who are equally as motivated. Honors students should be constantly engaged and challenged in class. And if they're not, then we're not seeking the education that we desire. That's it.
Thank you, Bryn.
Thank you.
Can I ask, does everybody know when Miss Hartman said STEM? Does everybody know what that stands for? Yes, no?
Yes.
It's science, technology, engineering, and math that are the emphasis now.
Hello. I'm Julia Kuester. I'm a sophomore, and I'm enrolled in honors English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. I've always been quick to understand the material of my classes, and I've been in advanced math since fifth grade. At that time, being in an advanced class meant that we learned all the same stuff just fast. Therefore, we had more time to do projects and group activities. So, while looking at this class, it may have not seemed advanced, it was still in the best interest of all students. This grouping allowed the students who quickly understood the material to have more advanced class discussions. While the kids who needed more time to understand the material could have it explained to them at a pace that was more beneficial to them. Allowed the students to get the attention they needed, and that still stands true today with the advanced classes in the high school. The labeling of courses in the high school does not matter as much to me as making sure that the younger kids who are taking a class are grouped separately from the older kids who are taking a class. I will be using Algebra II as an example. Algebra II is a class usually taken by juniors, meaning that if you're a sophomore taking Algebra II, you have been in the honors math, on the honors math track for at least one year, if not multiple. For you to be in the honors track, that means that your teachers or you have recognized the fact that you understand math faster than your peers. Should you not get the higher-level class discussions that helps you learn while the other students get the extra time and explanation that they need, you cannot get both things in one class. If the teacher teaches to the students who grasp the material at a quicker pace, then the students who learn at a slower pace will be pushed too hard. And if the students who teach, if the teachers teach to the students who grasp the material at a slower pace, the faster-paced learners will not reach their full potential, whether they get bored or things are just repetitive. They are not pushed as hard as they should be. The way to allow all students to be successful is to have separate classes. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you, Julia.
My name is Melissa Zittle. I have two daughters. One is a freshman, one is gonna be a sophomore, both honors students. And as everyone on the board knows, I addressed this issue two weeks ago. And I believe I was the first parent to raise it. It's my understanding that absolutely nothing has been done to look to a solution yet, and that is really frustrating. Because now, school starts in two days. Two weeks ago, we had two weeks. Now, we have two days. To do nothing and to continue to do nothing and to schedule meetings into the future is not fixing the problem. I have outlined the multitude of problems with this decision. But I really wanna stop focusing on how terrible of a decision it was and just focus on fixing it. There's no opposition. You do not see, and correct me if I'm wrong, one parent, one student, one teacher, one anybody here in opposition to fixing it. There's no issue. It's not in dispute. Just fix it. You have a cheat sheet. It's not like this is the first time it's ever been done. We're gonna incorporate honors classes that we've never before done in the town of Eden. You have a cheat sheet. You have the master schedule from the past five years. Just copy it. This isn't hard. It may be work, but it's not hard. You have a model, use it. There's two things that really need to be done. First, change the schedule. Group these children back together the way they should be grouped. I don't think anyone's here disputing that that's the way that they should be grouped. The second thing is adjusting the curriculum. That can also be done pretty easily, but it's not as urgent as two days from now. The curriculum can involve the meetings with department heads and the meetings with the math and science chairs. And they can adjust the curriculum. That's not hard. They can add a paper, add a project, be consistent with STEM. Have the honors students investigate a career in math or science and write a report about it. You can do something very simple to adjust the curriculum and make it a legitimate honors curriculum. The solution was not to, "Oh, the curriculum's not different, let's remove honors classes." The solution was make it different and enrich it in the simplest of ways that could have been done. And I know I've gone beyond my time, but I wanted to share a quick story about the REACH program that Miss Hall broke up, brought up. She talked about the REACH program that used to exist in Eden and was also taken away to the, from the advanced students. And I immediately scheduled a meeting with the principal, as you can imagine I would do, the next day, as soon as I heard of this. And that principal, who is no longer with the Eden School District, who I believe left on his own terms, said to me, "Well, Miss Zittle, why do you think I have my children in private school?" That was the answer I received. As you can imagine, that was unsatisfying. There has to be consideration for these students. There just has to be. They need the learning environment that they've been in for the past several years. It is the appropriate learning environment for these students. No one, again, is here to oppose that you fix it. I think this undermines all the work that's been done by Missy Hartman to get people to move to Eden. It hurts the ranking, all the things that have been said before. But I'll leave you with what inspired me to speak out. My daughter said to me, "Mom, you have to do something. You have to do something to fix this." And that's what I'm telling you now, as the Board of Education, as the superintendent, as teachers, as administrators in the school. We have to do something to fix it. And now, not I'm gonna schedule a meeting a week from now, not I'm gonna schedule a meeting a month from now. Fix it today, tomorrow. Change the schedule. It's really not hard. I've talked to principals in other schools that have similar size. I've talked to teachers in other schools of similar size. I've talked to teachers in Eden. I have not heard one person oppose this.
Is there anyone else?
Well, we have a question.
Are we allowed to ask a question?
You can ask questions.
Can I just ask the students something? Why are you guys afraid to be in a class of someone not older?
Oh, wait a second.
No, I just wanna ask the students.
But I had discussed this as, wait. I had discussed this as someone who had that experience of being...
I'd love to be respectful, really? You're gonna put kids on the spot and ask them why they're afraid?
No, 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 no. I just, because we must have other issues, too, then. I understand the point of learning with your age group, like, all the ninth graders learning with the ninth enrichment, things like that. But I hear, like, bullying and things like that. So, there's gotta be other issues also on top of this.
No, she said not bullying, right? I heard not bullying.
I said not bullying.
I'm not saying...
In jokes as to our...
But close to bullying.
Yeah. I think the issue is too bold, not to speak again. But you have the issue of putting these students in with the older kids, which will create bullying. Actually, my children have both received over five Snapchat or social media messages indicating that it's the older students' academic plan for the year to cheat off of them.
I mean, that's what I wanted to hear.
I mean, how are they gonna manage that in their grade? And by the way, the older students don't like it either. From what I've heard, from all the discussions I've had, from all the research I've done, talking to the older students who are now, have these younger honor kids in their class, is they're gonna be intimidated? You think these younger honors kids don't wanna answer the question? The older kids don't wanna be shown up by these young whippersnappers. They don't wanna ask a question. Now, they're intimidated, too. Because the people younger than them understood it the first time the math teacher taught it. And now, I'm asking you to explain it to me the fifth time, because I still don't get it. So, you have problems from both age groups.
Excuse me. I didn't mean to interrupt. But it's really not the age issue as much as the fact that you've got different abilities.
I think that's true.
And it's probably where the unease comes. And I totally understand that. It makes sense.
I would also like to point out that for my grade, I can name almost every single person in my grade, because we don't change a lot. It's like 120 kids in our grade. I do not know everyone in the grade above me. So, it's not even like, oh, there's one new student. It's like, hey, you don't know 25 of the 26 kids in your class.
And it's not just academics, because when my kids were in, I have a daughter who just graduated, and she'd be made fun of in chorus class because she knew the songs. And that's not even academic, if you wanna say. So, if the kids are making fun of the kids who enjoy something as simple as chorus, what's it gonna be like when it's academics and my 10th grader is showing up, the 11th grader? Like you said, if they don't understand it, she's not in with her peers. She's in with all 11th graders regardless of their ability to learn.
I think regardless, assuming honors class isn't about this learning crap that older kids are learning, right? Isn't the whole point of honors class to challenge students, to give them more ways and to explore what you do with the information and take a deeper dive into it, not just learn the same stuff that older kids are learning?
I'm gonna speak very frankly before we make a motion to go into executive session. And if I make anybody cringe, I apologize. But I'll be the first to say I'm not overly happy with this situation. But I'm also a person who comes to, well, it is what it is now. So, how are we going to move forward? I, you might not like hearing this, but please rest assured that this has done nothing but consume my phone calls with Sandy for the last probably two and a half weeks. I wish, I am a teacher, I'm an educator. I've worked in middle school, I've worked in high school, I'm currently in elementary school. I feel like the solution seems simple. But changing curriculum isn't just something that happens. You don't just spew it out there. I want to fix this. This is my hope to fix it. But I am also not going to race through a fix for something that, first of all, we... I'll be honest, I had no awareness of this, and I know that may be shocking to a lot of people. But this was all new information for me. I'm not pleased with how the communication was. I don't think it went well at all, but I can't change that. This is what I have now, and this is what we are doing moving forward. I want the fix, the solution, to be something that's good. I don't want to just throw something out there just for the sake of saying we fixed it. I don't want to find myself, ourselves, in a situation like this six months down the road because now some other problem has rolled out because we've made... because now some other problem has rolled out because we've made a knee-jerk decision, not going forward, forward with facts. It's important to me to find out how we got here. It is. It, it, and I'll be the first to, you know, being on the board, everyone thinks we should know everything. We don't. I don't work here every day. I'm not here every day, all day long. I could tell you everything that happens in my school. So I need to know for me personally that whatever decision we come to is with as much information as we can, and we're moving forward in the best interest of these kids and making school a place that they want to be at and that they're getting what they need. And I'm not saying it won't happen, but I think if, if we're going to rush this decision before school starts, I, I'm not saying it can't happen this year, but I just think it, we maybe.
Here's the problem, it doesn't happen this year.
I'm not saying.
Literally, we need to know whether we're leaving the school.
I'm only asking until Tuesday, Rich. That's what all of my messages have said, the teachers came in today. Okay? Teachers are the first time, people I've been trying to reach for two and a half weeks, I can't get them. It's not contractual. It's not that they don't want to talk, they've been away. I need to hear what happened and why to understand what the issue is.
But no one on the entire board knew at all?
I didn't know either.
No, so.
And it's a unilateral decision made by the four principals.
So this is what I've found out so far. And, and, and for those that were, I don't know if there was anybody here, but this morning, I spoke to the whole Eden School District. And, and my message was, we're approachable. If there's an issue that you don't think's right, come and talk to us about it. None of us knew. So I asked one person about the situation. I said, he goes, "I thought you knew about it."
Are you going to fix this problem though so that it can't happen in the future? Like how you have a principal that can change things is beyond me. If you have one person being able to change things in your town, we can't have one person.
So have you, anybody been on the website of late and looked at the curriculum guide? Okay. What do you think happened on there? I think they just changed date. Because it still shows living environment honors, physics honors. So if, if, if I'm a concerned student or a parent, I'm like, okay, there, what's changed? Nothing. But yet, we find out when the schedule gets released on the 19th that there's no honors classes.
So who's the "they"?
Like, one person can do all this?
Well, that's.
I mean, it's a. Let us do some fact finding.
That's where we're, we're still, like Jen said, our, our time has been consumed.
But no one else in the building told us.
Well, that's the question right now.
Right, which is why I need a little time.
And Rich, I think you hit the nail on the head. Because my concern is, I don't want to be in a position where we're dealing with this again. So I want to do my due diligence and really understand the hows and the whys. I'd like to see new, new policies in place.
Well, there, any new principal doesn't have the right to make a change without going through me. So all of us sitting here who've been here a long enough time, worked with Missy, worked with people to make changes. I'm embarrassed by this, I'm appalled by it. I keep asking the question, why didn't someone tell me?
Maybe I'm beating the horse, but.
I don't think you're going to get to a brilliant reason why this was done. Like, I think this was a lazy scheduling. It was easier to make the master schedule work if you just eliminated these classes.
But not addressing that isn't going to help us going forward.
There's no great reason why it was done. So I guess you can get to the bottom of the forensic analysis of how this happened and what policy change has to be made to ensure it doesn't happen again. But my point is, you can switch the schedule now and group these kids together now and then get to the bottom of what harebrained idea was this? My gut tells me this was just a lazy way to make the schedule work and a lazy way to make everyone get whatever elective they wanted without really looking at it with an eye of trying to keep the honors classes.
So Melissa, I have a meeting set up with all of them tomorrow.
And I think they just found a friendly ear. That's what they found. I'm sure it's not the first time they tried to do it.
Who's they?
It's not.
Who's they?
I'm sure they finally found a principal that would listen.
Who's they? It's not, I, I'm not willing to take that without asking the question. I don't believe it came from our teachers.
I'm not saying teachers. No, I don't think teachers. I think everyone who's involved with this master schedule, it was always going to be easier to eliminate honors. It's always easier. Of course, it's easier. But it doesn't make it a better decision.
Moving forward, as long as we know that, I think everyone's priorities first is to get this honors fixed for this year and figure out what happened and how to change this in the future next. But I think the most important thing, I think we're all saying is, just get honors fixed and have honors here. I have never thought in my entire life, I'm Mr. Eden. I love Eden. I tell everybody to move to this town. I think the school is great. First time I actually thought about leaving this town. So just get this fixed. And I understand mistakes happen. I don't, I've, I've made more than my fair share. But I think we just wanted to let you, make sure you know that the first thing, fix honors, change the rest afterwards.
And I think we have to concentrate on implications to a college-bound student and specifically a senior right now. Because I don't agree with your statement that if you have identified a program to not be actual honors, that honors can remain on the transcript. And my concern there is if I was a parent of a junior or a senior right now, I would be irate. Because that means we were misled about what our children were taking in the classroom and what their transcript is going to represent for their college admissions, to their college scholarship competition, you know? Going back to the STEM, I use the liaison for our admissions to our engineering program. We required that those borderline students have honors math and science. So you can probably have people tell you in all different directions, at different colleges in this town, they'll tell you from UB honors, or I'm sorry, UB Engineering and Honors College, we looked at students who had honors. If we had a borderline student, if a student took honors, they were higher than the student who didn't because they challenged themselves. So if we are removing honors off of that, you are hurting that, that whole group of students. And those parents never had the opportunity to make a different decision. Those parents didn't have the opportunity to say, can we take it to another class? Those parents, students, or those students are going into AP classes probably unprepared. And I, you know, I, that has to be focused on. I know we need a quick fix because of, I think that's why I'm transcripts. But we need to focus because I'm one of those parents who is going to pull my daughter out of this district. And I'm the supervisor of this town, and I support this school district 100%. But I can't punish my daughter and put her in a school district that she can't get off, that she can't have the same offerings as if we had lived in Hamburg. And I can't, everyone knows my salary. We can't really afford private. I'll take out loans because she's a, she's the top of her class and so, and now she's entering 11th grade. She's going to be on the honors track. And I can't say to her, well, we're going to leave you in Eden. And you're not going to get the same opportunity as you would have had even if we were in North Collins. So we have to fix this. And I just want to mention again, I've offered my help. I have come to the school. I came to the school before I was supervisor, offering my free help to the guidance department on college preparation, starting with looking at the classes they're taking because I recognize the problem. And it hasn't really been, and it could some of it be my fault, but it has not moved forward. I'm offering my help again, free of charge. I offer the school help in any way that I can. There are other community members in here who are offering their help as well to help you find a solution. Because I agree with Melissa, we have to find a solution. Because these students that are applying for college right now, right now, they are already applying for college. I, I just question if you can keep the honors on there. I hope to God you can. But if you can, what's the explanation that's going on there with your transcript?
Can I just ask a, a question? Because some of the, in census happened, I've talked to other principals of other high schools. And there are local high schools that don't do honors at all.
Yeah.
There are high schools that just moved to getting the, the college credit. They don't really even call their classes AP. They just move towards working with local colleges to gain credit while they're in school. I guess my, my thought is, and for you who's, being someone who's worked at the college level, if honors is dictated by the school with, there's, there's no set boundaries put out by the state, how do you know what the rigor is as a college, college admissions?
Well, each college counselor, especially local, they know the high school curriculum. So, but we also trust that if a student, if a school puts an honors distinction on there, they're taking an advanced curriculum of some sort. Okay, so we're not going to monitor that Hamburg's is more advanced than Eden's. But you're stating to the us, as a college admissions representative, that this student has taken an upper-level class opposed to a student who's maybe just taking the region's level. So for example, if, let's, I, I don't, I didn't review local schools, but let's say that I did, and Eden was one of my schools, and I knew that you waited your honors and AP. So the majority of New York State high schools wait their honors and AP courses. And there's specific percentages based on which course. If, if Eden did not wait, and that admissions representative at University of Buffalo knew they did not wait, they would recalculate in, awaited, to give them an even playing field with other schools. If they did wait, then you're waiting your honors classes, stating that this honors student is working at a higher level and deserves a higher grade. And if that's not actually happening, then you're actually putting the students who are doing the exact same work just in their regular year at a disadvantage because your honors students are getting waited, which I think is what happens here. So there's all these different ways that you can look at it. Yes, some schools have just AP, some schools have just STEM, and all, all of those things. But the college admissions counselor knows that and knows how to wait that. They know how to wait an honors class. So if it says honors, that admissions counselor is calculating that as an honors class. Or the school, like I think we are, are waiting that as an honors class. There's a lot of ethical issues there, and that's why I question that so much on if leaving that honors on there. Because you are actually, what, who you're hurting there are the regular region students. Because you're giving them, you're giving your honors students a higher grade for not, for the same work, which is not right as well. So I could go on and on and on about how admissions looks at it, it's not good.
One point that hasn't been raised, if you leave it the way it is, and I don't know if everybody follows this, but if you're envisioning, this will happen to both of my daughters. If you're envisioning what their transcript looks like, right now, it'll look like they were in honors math and science.
Now somebody's.
And now they're not.
And that's a big check mark.
Why aren't they? It's a huge red flag. That basically takes their application to every competitive college and winds it up in the garbage. And that's what you've done to them.
Well, not necessarily always, but yes, that's a check mark. So if they're looking at a specific program, let's say engineering, and they, and UB is a very competitive engineering school, and they're borderline on their SAT scores, there's a minimum requirement. Then we drop to where they have to have honors. So let's say I'm looking at a transcript for engineering, and this student had honors and then is not in honors. I'm automatically going to assume that they've left that voluntarily or they were kicked out of it. So I agree with that. It might not hurt every single student. It, it, it may not. Like, we, you could have a student who has a fantastic SAT score, I can give you a name, but I'm not going to, who did very well in all of his classes. You could remove those honors classes. It's probably not going to affect him getting into the program or the school that he wants. But you're going to take a student who takes those honors classes, works very hard at it, is borderline maybe for a specific program, is being considered for a scholarship, is being considered for an honors college, and you're going to, somehow, that's going to be adjusted because of the decisions that were made, and it's going to hurt that, those students. There will be students affected. There will be students who aren't, and there will be students who are affected. But I think you have to keep the one student being affected in mind and enroll with a better answer there. I, you just have to have a solution.
So can I ask a quick question? So for those that have their schedules, are, are you in honors English now still? So the only four classes that are affected are advanced geometry, advanced algebra, living environment, and physics. And then when it all, when it's all said and done, you come back and you still take the same Regents exam at the end of the year as honors versus non-honors? Okay. I just want to make sure I, I wasn't overlooking.
But I just want to say that it's not just those four. Because you have a whole honors program pushing into those classes.
But, but, but I'm just, I'm just trying to find out. So what I understand is there's four that were designated, two in science and two in math, that are non-honors, that were honored, offered honors in the past. But ultimately, when it comes back to it, you take the same Regents exam as everybody else in the state.
But you should look, that science and math are the, are the two areas that are being emphasized in, in the state program and, and for getting into colleges, science and math. You're dropping the two classes that, that are emphasized, the two things that are emphasized the most.
I, that's completely.
Those four classes are core classes for engineering schools to look at. If they took honors, if they did, how'd they do in the Regents and how did they do in the others?
And for pre-mad and for a lot of other schools.
Yeah, pre-mad, I agree. I'm just, I'm just using engineering as an example.
Yeah, so you're dropping.
I think that is, is.
You're dropping the most important.
And to say it's only four, that's a double-edged statement. Because that should mean it's.
I'm, I'm just.
He's not making a value statement, he's just.
I'm just fact-finding right now to make sure that something else isn't out there that I know about.
Yeah.
I mean.
Because then it should be an easy fix. It's only four. Why not just fix it?
See, algebra class not going to have an honors designation also? It's given in eighth grade?
No, it's seventh and eighth grades weren't changed.
So the algebra class has an honors designation on it?
Algebra one.
But then you have geometry and it no longer does.
True.
Right, so it looks like they dropped out of the honors program.
And it's, and, and there's no longer a wait for any of the honors classes?
There was never a wait for an honors class, is my understanding.
From Eden, but colleges put a wait on it.
I understand that, but that's not the way I would say.
There's no wait for any of the classes here?
No.
Not at honors.
Admissions wait.
I think he, he means weighted grades, not a wait.
No, my understanding is that they do not wait the honors classes at Eden High School.
That's incorrect.
Well, that's why I need a little time.
I'm confused because I, I, you know, I hear people who have 101 averages coming from Eden.
These are the APs and the new stats.
So I'm, I'm just asking you. I need to talk to these teachers. And today was the first day they were here. They were in meetings all day long. We have meetings scheduled for tomorrow. I will clarify that.
That, that should come through guidance.
Understood. I will clarify that. I will check that out. That was my understanding from a question that I asked a week ago. Perhaps I asked the wrong person, which is why I need these people here for me.
So on Tuesday, when we meet again, you're going to come and give us an answer, yes or no possibly?
I'm sure there's more than one answer that I need to give you, right? I'm being asked to move that meeting earlier. I can move it to 4:30.
Okay.
Okay? Because there are other meetings scheduled at 5:30. Just asking for a little time so I can ask the right people.
If, when, when you guys come up and have all your information and stuff like that, before the decision is made one way or the other, are we going to know about it before you make this? Like, basically, what I think everyone's concerned was too is, this is the only time we're going to talk to you before the decision is actually made.
No, not at all. That's not the way I've done anything else that I can think of with this. This one came as a big surprise to me too.
Who's going to.
It wasn't budgetary.
What's his point? And I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Jen, Horschel, Jen Horschel.
To your statement too. I, I think it's worth beating the door off. This needs to be fixed by Tuesday. Like, beyond everything that was said, right, as Mrs. started talking, I was saying, if you don't fix it by Tuesday, my daughter, Maggie, Bryn, and all the other kids are not going to be a full year behind. And good luck trying to figure that out a year from now. On, on top of the disadvantage you put them all in. So they're off honors, and now they're going to go back into honors if you actually get around to figuring it out. There's, there's a lot of holes here. So I would say, sure, do whatever fact-finding. I don't care if the janitor screwed it up. Somebody just needs to fix the damn thing.
We understand.
And, and to boot, I mean, the only other thing I haven't heard that's been brought up, somehow, none of you knew, especially yourself and Stan Sloan, but students, and a good number of them somehow knew last year at the end of school year by their counselors. The same counseling department that for the last two weeks has said, "Don't call us if you have questions." So it all stinks. It all sucks, and we demand it to be resolved.
I will say, based off what you just said, Cheryl, is I don't feel that the board's lack of knowledge is something that I personally hold you accountable for.
Thank you.
But the administration, I, I think, needs to be more in the know in informing the board when, when these decisions are made.
And if I could say too, just as a parent, the disappointment in, for my daughter, that was tough for me. She was disappointed to see that there wasn't a value put on her strive for academics. And so as a mom, you know, I can't speak as eloquently as everyone else does, but I looked at her thinking, this is all I'm giving you. These are your four years of high school. I, this is the best I'm giving you. So if it's not, if you're not going to be recognized as, you know, this is what you strive for, this is her thing. She's proud of this. She enjoys it more than I did. She loves to learn. I don't get it. But she loves to learn. And it's hard for me to look at her and say, I, I might have you in a school district that isn't, isn't really going to honor that for you. So.
But I just want to get back to what you said. So the kids knew last spring that these are dropped?
Rumors were going around from the teachers last spring.
And honestly, I didn't understand it.
But, but Julia, what did you?
So the science department did tell us that they heard that there was possibility of it being dropped and they were currently trying to fight it because the, like, science wing in the high school, all the teachers talk around there. And they all did agree that their honors classes, while they may take the same final as the regular class, they did teach more in-depth and use other materials that they did not use with their regular class.
Okay, so, so it really wasn't, it was, it was rumored in the spring. So you weren't sure, but you had heard that it might happen?
From teachers.
From teachers.
But you really did have.
But you didn't have the, the schedule until what, until when? You got the schedule just two weeks ago.
August 19th is when it was released.
The step schedule? Yeah, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, and that's when we did get the email from the guidance that said, Two weeks ago, and that's when we did get the email from the guidance that said, you know, unless you're adding a class, don't come to us.
Don't call us.
And they were closed the first week after we got our schedule.
Yeah, if you don't know that, that's an important piece, which is also maddening, but not really related to fixing the problem. Guidance, after they blasted out these schedules, decided to take a week vacation. I'm not saying they're not entitled to vacation, but the timing is interesting. And then, when they got back, they sent out a blast email to all parents in the district, saying, don't call us, don't email us, don't meet, we're not gonna meet with you, live with the schedule you have, and if in a couple of weeks you still don't like it, then maybe we'll deal with you then. That is outrageous. It's just outrageous. I liken it to, let's say, if I was a tax lawyer, and I decide, you know what, I'm gonna take the month of April off. Because people are gonna bug me in April. They're gonna call me, they're gonna have questions, they're gonna have issues, they're gonna want answers. So I'm just gonna take that month off, because it's a lot easier for me if I hide under a rock that month. That's simply unacceptable. That's when people need them the most. They have to be available. It is their job.
And, like, the board, this isn't your job. I understand that you're not in the schools. I think your avenue of information is usually right from us, or if it comes from the administration. So it's not like you're gonna hear things firsthand. But, you know, you're showing up, and I don't envy the position you're in, and I know all of you had or have kids in the district and care. So, I know.
We are going, thank you for coming, first of, yes.
Can I help you transition to your other fantasy area? We should've done, I should've done this a week or two ago when we had the other meeting, but the other reason you're here tonight, I would just like to speak on half of that coach. One of my first memories of that guy that you're gonna talk about was Jessica, loves basketball. I grew up in Eden, we don't play basketball from Eden, only transplants play. But my wife's not from here, so my kids love basketball. One of my first memories of this guy was, he was coaching a summer league, modified or JV, and Jessica's a really good basketball player, and he's walking around with an IV stand, having an IV drip, because he had an infected hip replacement, ask Al. Not funny, he just lived through it. But this guy's so dedicated, he's out there in his gym shorts, whatever, coaching modified basketball on IV stand. And Jessica comes up to him, now Joe looks a little older, he's much younger than I think he is, and says, Joe, are you gonna die? And Joe, you know, in his rough-out ways, says, nope, Jess, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be here through the end for you, don't worry about it, this is only temporary, whatever. But we have this coach that is super dedicated, walk around the edges, yeah, again, I could hang out and have lots of fun and conversations, but I just wanna speak on my behalf. I, 110% for Joe. I can't say enough about his knowledge of basketball, knows more about it than I know. We were at a game two years ago, Jessica and Brooke are pretty good, all of a sudden they threw this different defense in. Joe says, ah, I let them down, I didn't have the offense to go against that defense. He knows more about this sport that these girls need than I know, than most of the parents know. We all sit there and Google when he talks about these new defenses or whatever that are getting thrown at these girls, because they're good. We have to sit there and Google, what is a star two, or whatever these triangle two was that won. But like I said, I can't speak enough on his behalf of, he's good, he's super dedicated, a little rough around the edges, but he's working on it, he's promises. So with that transition, you guys may be here exactly.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
We are making a motion to go...
Make a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Jack second.
Jack second.